Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Town Hall meeting here in Wellington. It's great to be with you tonight. I'll see a lot of friends around the room, so that's wonderful. I'm Tom Donnelly. I'm the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners this year, and I'm joined by Steve Johnson, my colleague from District 2. John Kafalas, actually, whose district we're in tonight, is not at the meeting tonight because it was his wife's birthday. And the -- yeah.
Better not miss that.
Yeah, and his family was, I guess, his kids and grandkids were gonna be, were gonna be in, having a little celebration, and he wanted to participate. Yeah, no kidding. That's what he should've done, is they should've brought his wife here, said, "Hey, look, there's snacks here." Yeah. Well, we let him out of the, we let him out of the meeting tonight to spend a good evening with his, with his wife and family, which is, what we all know is really what's important. We have a, we have a little bit of a set agenda here. We're gonna go through three or four different items, and, but we're gonna set aside a significant amount of time for Q and A, so you can ask us anything you'd like to ask about, and we'll be happy to give you an answer. Michelle Byrd from the Commissioner's Office, our Public Affairs Manager, is in the back, and she's standing in the back because she's standing by that little desk back there, and there's cards on there that say, "Connect with Laramie County," and we're not above bribery, so if you, if you will fill out one of these little cards with your name and your email address, we'll put you on our email distribution list. And how often do we send people email?
Once a month.
Once a month. You can get a nice email from Laramie County, find out what we're up to, what we're trying to do to you. You know, keep tabs on us. But if you sign up tonight, we will do a drawing in a little bit, in a few minutes, and you'll win a fabulous prize. A fabulous prize. A Laramie County water bottle. There you go. You'll never, you'll never be thirsty again. Yes? Michelle?
After the break, well, after the break, we're going to do the drawing then, so people have time during the break to sign up. Right now, there's nothing in there, so your odds are very good.
Yeah, no one's signed up. That's, that's the kind of odds we like in Laramie County, so...
There was one in there.
Well, I put one in there to kind of like get the ball rolling, but I was...
It was for herself. She signed up again.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like the fake Facebook stuff. There's like 5,000 Michelle Byrd, yeah, email addresses on the list. So we've got a few items we're gonna talk about. We welcome questions, obviously, on each of those items as we go. Don't hesitate, if you have a question, to just raise your hand and let us know. And then we did, as I mentioned, we set aside some time at the end of this, of our formal presentations, to talk about whatever's on anyone's mind. And I know that people have issues on their mind. No one usually shows up just to tell us we're doing a good job. You're here because you want to, you know, you might, maybe there's something on your mind, and we'd be happy to talk about that with you. So I think that might be all of our introductory remarks. Other than this, we are, we are amplifying this and, and we're microphoned up, and so if you ask any questions, we'll ask you to speak in the microphone, because we are, because we are broadcasting this live tonight on YouTube, and we'd like to thank the city of Fort Collins, those folks from coming up and, and setting up all this equipment and doing that for us, so you can, you know, you'll be internet famous, I guess, if you ask a question in a few minutes. So I guess I'll turn it over to Commissioner Johnson. He might introduce the first item, and then I might help him a little.
The first thing we want to share with you is the half penny sales tax proposal that the Commissioners have referred to the ballot. A couple weeks ago, we did that. And one of the most common things we hear when we talk to folks throughout the county is a concern about, will the quality of life of the county be maintained as the county grows in population? We're a very popular place to live. A lot of people are moving here. The state demographic tells us by 2050, which is only 31 years away, our population in Laramie County will increase by 55 percent. So that's 150,000 more people here in the next 30 years. That's equivalent to an entire new Fort Collins, a city of Fort Collins, size of that, plopped into the borders of Laramie County. So that presents some long-range challenges for us in the areas of transportation and the ability to have the proper facilities to deliver services throughout the county. So we have been engaging for the last couple of years in a very long-range planning effort to look at what will the transportation improvements need, needed to be to handle that, so that we don't have congestion and increasing delays that we otherwise would have, and what type of county facilities will be necessary to provide the kind of services that our citizens want and deserve. So those two master plans have been in the works. We've been meeting for a year and a half with our municipal partners on transportation improvements, finding regional projects. Interesting, what we've found, which you guys probably know more than any other group we talked to, is that in the city of Fort Collins, 50 percent of the residents of Fort Collins drive out of the city to work in a different municipality, or even in Denver. In Loveland, 75 percent of the Loveland residents leave Loveland to go to Fort Collins or Greeley or Denver to work. So that places a lot of additional traffic on the regional road system, the county roads and the state highways that connect the different communities. And there's, we've worked extensively to identify, I think, about 40 regional projects that we know will need improvements over that 30-year period of time. Otherwise, we will have significant delays. And CDOT, the Colorado Department of Transportation, actually has a very sophisticated modeling program on traffic time and delays. And they've modeled six of our regional roads, and they look at the current delays, traffic delays, time that you're sitting there, not moving, or just in very slow traffic. And they have indicated by, is it, is it...
2045.
By 2045, delays will increase about five to six times on those six projects, according to their modeling. We have sophisticated modeling to do that. So we've identified about 40 regional projects, prioritized them. There is one here in Wellington area as well. I'm not sure exactly what it is. Commissioner Donnelly might know, but they're all over the county. And so of the half penny sales tax proposal, it's for 20-year period of time, if the voters think this is a wise investment. It's 50 percent of that, I believe, will go to transportation. 15 to 20 percent of that will be earmarked for transit projects, and that's not just in city limits. There's been a lot of interest expressed in communities such as yours as to have some kind of transit option to get to Fort Collins, or to get from Berthoud to Fort Collins, et cetera. So all of those are on the table. The other 35 percent is, is to fund the county's facility master plan. And facility sounds boring. It sounds like we're just building a bunch of buildings, but it actually affects public policy quite significantly. And I'll give you one example. We built an alternative sentencing unit in Laramie County, probably about six years ago, I think, with money that we had saved up, reserves, and that allows our judges to sentence folks to alternative sentencing options. That relieves the need to expand the jail and provide expensive jail beds. The other thing it does is give sentencing options that might be more appropriate for some types of offenders. So one of the programs in our alternative sentencing building is a workenders program, where an offender can go to their work job, their workplace during the day, and come back to the facility at night, and that counts as their stay, their sentence. Obviously, that's for nonviolent offenders and only for appropriate offenders, but if we didn't have the facility, we wouldn't be able to have that policy option. So facilities are more than just buildings. They're actually policy things. We have identified several things that we're very concerned about. One is our veterans' office in Laramie County. The number of veterans in Laramie County has increased significantly in recent years, and the issues our veterans face are very complex. And we believe that our veterans deserve an adequate place where they can visit with our Veterans Service Office employees, discuss their medical needs and their issues, and get help for the benefits that they have, they deserve. There's a couple other facility options in there, but I think those are probably the main highlights of the, of the proposal. It will be on the November ballot. It's a one-half cent sales tax proposal for a 20-year period of time. Tom, do you know the Wellington project? I looked at the list last week.
Wellington's priority project is the interchange, the Highway 1 and I-25 interchange. You know that we've dealt with this and tried to, tried to figure out some options for, for the last 10 years, frankly. So much of the housing is built on the east side of the interstate, and the schools and the parks and all the restaurants and everything are on the, mostly on the west side. And so it was not unusual, you know, a few years ago, to have kids running across the interstate to come across to, to go to the playground with the schools. Terror is scary, unbelievable. And so we did kind of do a, a little underpass under, with, because of the Box Elder Stormwater Project, we, we'll put a sidewalk under, one of those box culverts on the interstate, but it's, it's pretty far south. So the interchange is not, I came through it this, this evening on the way up here, and it's, it does have quite a volume of traffic, but it also doesn't have any kind of pedestrian access, you know, of any type. And so I think it's, that's, that's what the towns expressed to us as their number one priority. And obviously, we didn't make this up. We didn't tell anyone what their priority should be. We listened to the communities, and we had representatives from, from every one of the cities and towns in the county that sat on that advisory policy council and the technical council. And Miles Baker from Windsor's here. He's one of the town trustees, and he was actually on, on that, on the policy body that, that looked at these recommendations. And I'll just say this. I mean, I know, this is pretty, this is a pretty conservative group, and I come, I come to Wellington, I know that. And I have a reputation of being a pretty conservative guy myself, but I'm just gonna say this. There's, there's probably nothing you can do that will have a bigger impact on the future livability, not only our quality of life, but also our economy compared to what this, this really represents as far as regional, regionally significant transportation projects. Hang on one second, and I'll, I'll take a question. As Steve mentioned, we had, we looked at the modeling from the North Front Range MPO. We looked at six main quarters, I-25, Highway 287, US Highway 34, that's in the main street of Loveland there, US Highway 402, which is on the south side of Loveland, State Highway 14 on the north end of Fort Collins, and then County Road 17 between Loveland and Fort Collins. In Fort Collins, they call it Shield, Shields, and in Loveland, where I'm from, we call it Taft, so Shaft. So those six quarters, and if nothing is done, the amount of time you will spend sitting in traffic by 2045 will increase by 673 percent. That's unbelievable. So about a year ago, Steve and myself and Lou Gator, at the time, met with some, some large employers and business leaders in Laramie County, people that employ hundreds and hundreds of people. And not one person there who, who was sitting at that, at that dinner, at lunch with us, said taxes were too high. No one said regulations were too extreme for them to expand their businesses. Every single one of them said, "The biggest issue we're facing is being able to get our people to work." And, and we, we see that more and more, obviously, if you ever go to Fort Collins or Loveland especially. But one thing Steve didn't say, he's absolutely correct about the numbers of commuters, about 50 percent of the people in Fort Collins leave every day for work, 75 percent of the people in Loveland, including myself, leave every day for work. In Wellington, it's like 95 percent of the people have to leave town for work. And so our, our, our economy is really regional. We recognize that. Wellington is really one of the places where a lot of young families can actually afford to buy a home and live here. And so we know there, we know that there's a, through the commuting patterns, that people have to leave town for their, for their jobs and to make their living. And the last thing we want is for them to be stuck in traffic when they could be home with their families at night. So we think this is a, I mean, it, anytime, anytime you propose a tax, I mean, that's a, that's a big lift. That's a heavy lift, ask people to bear that. But we, we've really tried to look at this and tried to get the maximum bang for the buck. And, you know, we talked about those, those six major, major projects. Five of them are on US or state highways, right? And so what do you think the chances of, of CDOT or, or the federal government coming to, to the rescue and easing congestion up here? Probably not, not very likely. And so we're, we're in this on, on our own, and we're gonna have to find some solutions on our own. And so that's, that's part of what went into this, development of this plan, and we think it's, we think it's a good, solid plan. Not without cost, but we think it's a good, solid plan to really look at continuing to make sure that, that people can live here at a high quality.
And one thing I, one thing I didn't mention, and you might want to talk about this better than I am, but the first $10 million of the proposal is earmarked to widen I-25. We've been involved in a collaborative effort, actually Commissioner Donnelly led this effort of all the municipalities in Laramie County, and I think some in Weld County...
Yeah.
...to put $53 million of funding into the projects that you see on I-25 right now. And that will widen I-25 to three lanes in each direction from Mulberry, Colorado 14, down to 402, the south Loveland exit. So I think CDOT was planning to do that in like 2047 or something, according to their funding. But we were able to increase the local match and leverage additional funds because of the local match and get that done a lot quicker. There is not funding identified for Loveland's 402 exit down to Highway 66, the north exit of Longmont. That's about a 12-mile stretch, so that will remain two lanes in each direction and be a pretty significant bottleneck on the interstate. So we are, have earmarked the first $10 million of the transportation funds, $2 million each in the five years, so it won't delay our regional projects, but we've earmarked significant amount of funding to leverage additional fundings, state and federal, to complete the interstate all the way to Denver for three lanes in both directions from Mulberry to Denver. So that's also a part of the proposal.
Yeah. Can I me on that?
Yeah, we can.
Laramie County is a big county, and so half penny sales tax is gonna be applied to Estes Park, Redfeather Lakes, Virginidale, Berthoud, but yet these transportation projects are aimed at the very southeastern part of the county where the urban growth is occurring. So how, how does this benefit the rest of the county?
Well, that's actually not true. I just wrote a column yesterday about this, and the tier-one projects are in Wellington, Fort Collins, Loveland, Berthoud, Timnuth, Windsor, Johnstown, Estes Park.
So what are the tier-one projects?
Well, they're, they're projects that were selected by the, the communities, frankly. And so they, and they have different, Justine might have turned me down just to hear, but they're regionally significant. They had to be regional significant, regionally significant. And so, yeah, is there, is there a project in Redfeather Lakes? No, not really, but there's not much traffic in Redfeather Lakes either, although a lot of the folks who do live in Redfeather Lakes are, are working in Fort Collins. In fact, almost everybody up there is, frankly. And so, so what you seek to do is, at the place where the congestion begins, is mitigate that, right? And so if you can drive down from Redfeather all the way down 287 to nearly La Porte before you start seeing congestion, there's no reason to do a project in that stretch. The, the place where the, the project is needed is Taft Hill Road, perhaps. Do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, I think I'm more like, it's more that everybody in the county pays a tax.
Mm-hmm. They do.
Everybody in the county pays a tax, and so you hear it proposed all the time as far as new taxes that benefit primarily the urban areas, but everybody in the county pays those taxes?
Yeah.
And so can you speak to like how it would benefit Estes Park?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that's a big area that...
Well, for, there's still a couple things. That's a big question. And so...
It is.
Take, take her mic. So, okay. I'm gonna answer. I'm gonna answer her, and then we're gonna go to somebody else. So a couple things that come to my mind. One is, you mentioned Estes Park, and that's great. You should, you should be giving the presentation tonight, because that is the largest tourist destination in the state of Colorado, frankly. We have over 4 million visitors every year. And so one nice thing about a sales tax, frankly, is that, that people who come and visit us, tourists and, and other folks, even people who come from Weld County or as far away as the Midwest, will actually contribute to our, to our, our transportation infrastructure, which is a nice thing. And it's, it gives us a little opportunity to, to really collect from the, from a broader base of people who are using the road system rather than just a property tax, which is only on people who, who live here, right? And so Laramie County will exempt food for home use. We exempt prescription drugs, medicines, so that we try to make sure that we're not unnecessarily impacting seniors and some of those who are the most vulnerable in our communities. We think that's very helpful. A sales tax is great, is a great means from the county, because a county and a school district are both heavily reliant on property tax. And so by having a sales tax, it gives us a little bit more of a broader tax base, which we think is, we think is, is good in the long term as far as if we hit a, if we have a, some kind of economic hiccup on the road, maybe we have more stable funding sources if we have, don't have all of our eggs in one basket. So that's really the, that's really the nexus behind the idea of a sales tax. I, and, and I'll just say this. I'm very proud of this board's fiscal record, and I want to talk about, and I'll tell you about it. I'm sure you've heard, you've heard me talk before, so you've probably heard it seven times, but I'm gonna say it again, anyway. This Board of County Commissioners, when Steve and I came into office in 2008, the board had about $6 million in general fund reserves, our discretionary rainy day reserves. That number right now sits at over $30 million. And that's following the High Park fire and the 2013 floods, where we had over $100 million in infrastructure damage just in the floods alone. We paid for flood recovery out of reserves. Boulder County, if you lived in Boulder County right now, and I know none of us want to, you'd still be, I know, I'm looking at you, you'd still be paying a sales tax to fund flood recovery. So this board's fiscal record, I think, is, is one of extreme responsibility. This Board of Commissioners is something I've never heard of another elected body ever doing, and we did it twice. We ended two sales taxes early. One six months early, one three years early, putting literally tens of millions of dollars back in the taxpayers' pockets. We have given, again, I think we're the only board I've ever heard of, elected body in Laramie County at least, I've ever heard of, that has given a property tax credit back to taxpayers. We did that in 2016. We did that in 2018, and we're preparing to do it again in 2020. So I think, I want you to understand that we take these, the fiscal health of, of the county, we take the tax burden that's, that's being levied upon our citizens very seriously. We wouldn't enter into this if we didn't think it was absolutely necessary to, to really make sure that we're able to maintain the quality of life that we enjoy here, so...
And I might point out, Estes Park Trail Gazette recently wrote a very strong editorial in support of the proposal, which kind of surprised me, and mostly they hinged it on the regional transportation improvements that they felt were very significant to their community. And so it's something everybody's just gonna have to look at and decide. I mean, that's, is it good value? Is it, I think it's important for us to hand off our community, our county, to better shape than to our next generation, so I mean, but that's up for everybody to decide. That's why we have elections.
Get to vote.
We're here just to give you information, so you can make up your own mind.
And this is...
Commissioner Johnson, where is that article that...
The Estes Park Trail Gazette?
Okay.
Yeah, go to their website, look for, go under editorials, and I think it's their editorial from last Friday, I believe. If you can't find it, let me know, and I'll send it to you.
And this is Lori Cadrich. She's our public work, I guess, our public works director, basically. I don't know what your real title is, but that's her...
That's close enough.
That's what it basically is.
I wanted to speak more to the projects in the smaller communities. And Estes Park, I agree with the Commissioners, was an excellent one to raise, because they have a significant amount of money going into infrastructure to meet their master plan, transportation and pedestrian project needs that are in that tier-one list. And so they will directly benefit from a project if this tax moves forward. In addition to that, the piece I wanted to add is this part of money that is available for transit, because Estes Park is, as we all know, as you're up there in the summer, the tremendous needs that they have, and they are operating a significant bus system. And every year, that is growing. And so a portion of the sales tax money will be available to expand their operation, whether that's build a facility, whether that's add buses, whether that's add larger buses, but that'll be available for all of the communities as we try to build capacity with the existing roads and then build future capacities so that buses can travel easier and pedestrians can move more easily.
Do you have any questions about this specific proposal? We're gonna move on if not. Because we, this is, we have one more item, and then the break, I think.
And the drawing.
And then the drawing, immediately after that.
So don't leave.
Exciting. Okay, so next item is Way Shed project update. Commissioner, you gonna handle that?
So we have Lori Cadrich, our public works director, and Lou with us, who's kind of the project manager for the landfill project. As you know, the landfills slated to close here in six or seven years, so we have had a very long planning process for what do we do in the future? Do we have a landfill? Do we, do we have other options for diversion of additional material from the landfill? And all of those questions, we had a technical advisory committee meeting for probably three years on this. We had a policy advisory committee of elected officials from Fort Collins, Loveland, Estes Park, and Laramie County and other municipalities joined in on that effort. We had a stakeholder group of citizens from all over the county, I think 40 or 50 people in the stakeholder group, and they have come up with a plan for the future, which involves making our current landfill basically a transfer station, looking at locating a landfill up on the property that the county owns up here, north of town, on County Road 72, I believe, and in, creating some diversion options, which will allow us to divert about 40 percent of the material that's currently going into our landfill and keeping that material out of future landfilling, which is an extremely significant achievement in an area where landfilling is very cheap. It makes it hard to, to do recycling and reuse projects. But we're looking at a composting option at our current location on South Taft Hill. We're looking at a construction and demolition, recovery, operation there, as well as some improvements to recycling that should allow us, I believe, to divert 40 percent, if I remember correctly, of the materials going in landfill, which is very, very significant. So is it Lou or Lori? Lori's gonna start first?
And as luck would have it, we have not rehearsed, so Commissioner Johnson just said everything I was going to in the introduction. So I only have...
We're done.
One more thing that I want to add before Lou tells you more specifically about the plans that we have for the new facilities. And that piece is, wanna focus on what's the problem, right? The problem is the landfill is old, it's nearing capacity, and when it was built, it wasn't built in the way that we would build a landfill today. And so that's the problem that the Commissioners faced a few years ago, as well as the rest of us who live in the region. The thing I really want to stress is that Laramie County is the first county in the state of Colorado to look at this on a regional basis. And so our approach to building a new landfill is very different than the approach that was taken years ago, and Lou's gonna give you some good information about that. Ironically, the work that the Board of County Commissioners, as well as the other municipal leaders have done already, has led to an award, a national award, for the planning and the approach taken to keep things out of the landfill, as well as to operate the landfill correctly in the future. And so I applied for this position in part because of the work that's happening in the Way Shed, because it's going to be a model for what happens across the nation when communities work together to do the best that they can to keep things out of the landfill and then operate the landfill in the way that it should be done. And with that, Lou can move right to, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention is, right now, we have four partners that we've entered into intergovernmental agreements with to help do the planning, the operation, and evaluate what should be done going forward. That's Estes Park, the city of Fort Collins, Laramie County, and the city of Loveland. I'm proud to say that the town of Wellington is nearly on that board, nearly on that partnership. So a couple of resolutions have already been adopted by the partners that are currently here, and we expect within a month that Wellington will also be represented on our policy committee and help influence how this project moves forward. And with that, Lou.
Thank you very much, Lori. So the big question everybody asks is, where is this landfill?
We're gonna find out right now.
What are we doing? Can I have the lights trimmed a little bit? Is everyone seeing this okay? It's kind of hard to see this map, so we're gonna dim the lights a little bit.
Oh, yeah, five miles.
Michelle, we're also showing a little handout here for a map. There we go.
I have a lot, but I have a few.
So we're about five miles north of here, right where Route 9 and, right Route, I'm sorry, County Road 9, County Road 76 meet. That is the location of the new landfill.
Is it 76?
And it's roughly close to about 200 acres on one side and about 100 acres on the other side. Coming out of our old landfill, as Commissioner Johnson said, we're closing that landfill down in about four years, four to five years. That's how much life we have left at that landfill, so we need a new landfill. Are we throwing everything in the dump? No, we're not. We're actually converting the old landfill into sort of an environmental industrial park. We're gonna have a compost operation, construction, demolition operation. We're gonna be doing some landfill diversion, not to just bring all our waste up here and just bury it in a hole in the ground. Our main route coming out, we'll be coming out of our old landfill, coming up I-25. We'll get off at Al Canyon, and then we'll head north on... And then we'll head north on Nine, right to our new landfill. That'll be our main truck route for the big vehicles. And you're not going to have small little route trucks coming up here. We're actually going to have a transfer station. And in the transfer station, the stuff in the trucks gets loaded into big trucks. So you have bigger vehicles, 100 cubic yard walking floor trailers, coming up here to this site. And people have asked, well, how many trucks are we coming through our roads? Not that many. Because we're condensing all the smaller routes into a larger truck. So you're going to have roughly three to four vehicles coming in in about an hour's time.
So let me interject. That's why it's important that we're diverting so much stuff out of that waste stream, right? There's a financial implication there as well. We don't want to have to, we don't want to have to offload and haul and then reload and haul stuff twice. That's very, that would be very, very expensive. That's why we're looking for, so you can look at this. I mean, that's a heck of a, imagine running those trucks every day, offloading them at that convenient, for most people. Wellington's actually the only people in the county where this new landfill is actually more convenient than the old one. But for everyone else, the old one is more, much more convenient. And so imagine dumping trash trucks in there, reloading them, and hauling again. I mean, that's, that's a tremendous cost. That's why we're seeking, that's one of the reasons. I mean, there's many reasons, environmental reasons and other things. But one of the main reasons you want to divert so much of the trash stream is so we don't double haul it, double handle it, and double haul it up the interstate.
So, thank you. We also have another route. So we have a main route and we have an auxiliary route. So this blue route goes a little bit north, and it comes over, right over here in Buck Road, and we come down. Buck, thank you. Buckeye, thank you, Ohio Buckeye. So then we come down south to the landfill. So we have that route as well. And we even have a third route. We just come up Taft Hill. We just come up, straight up Taft, and then we cut across to Nine, off of 70, County Road 70, and then just come right up. So based on these three routes, we have the ability to also divert our traffic. We don't have just one stream with big trucks coming down the road. Will these trucks use this route every day? Some of them will. Some of them will also use the alternative route. Some of them will use the back route. On a daily basis, you might see one or two trucks on those routes throughout the course of the day. Here's another view of where the trucks are going to go, the route trucks are going to go in reference to where they're going to go to our landfill above and where they're going to come down to, hold on, let me get this. So right around here, we have what we call kind of the Mason-Dixon line. So right around here is kind of the cutoff line. If the route trucks are north of this, of this intersection, right around here, they're going to come straight to the landfill. Most of the Fort Collins area is right down here. All that traffic's going to go to our transfer station. And there, we're going to transfer it into the big trucks. So we do have a cutoff point, so we don't divert all the traffic up here. And we're trying to keep as much of the traffic off the road as possible. So what happens in our landfill? Our landfill that we're building today is quite different than the landfill that we have now. A lot of these newer landfills are subject to what's called a Subtitle D ordinance. Subtitle D is a federal law that passed into the '70s and the '80s. And that demands that landfills must have groundwater controlling system. So we cannot leachate water into the aquifers below. They also have a liner system, meaning a tough synthetic liner. And then you have layers of clay, something in the realm of 10 feet before we could actually put anything in the landfill. So we have also leachate collection. We have gas monitoring. We're also doing a lot of wonderful things up in that landfill that a lot of people don't even see. And you don't see that in most landfill. And that's, we're going to have a lot of protective fencing and barriers to keep any contamination, because we know we have high winds up there. But we're taking a lot of protective measures to keep the fencing and keep the area clean. In fact, if you go to our current landfill, we don't even have nearly the fencing that we're going to put up there. And you'll see there's no debris on the roads. This is what a modern landfill looks like. This cross-sectional area, and I'm going to go through this kind of quickly, but there's a lot of moving parts. Landfills have what they call cells, where they're kind of cubes. They're cubes of compacted material. And then every day, they're covered with fresh dirt to prevent any material from blowing around. They also have what's known as a leachate collection system and a gas monitoring system. So there's a lot of detail involved with the modern landfills that are being built today. So when you start a landfill, you start with a big hole in the ground. You usually start some 30, 40 feet in the ground. And as, a lot of us have built a cake, right? You just build layer, 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 layer. And as the landfill grows and matures, it starts to go up in height. So as you develop the height, it could be some 30 to 40 feet above ground. So it just looks like a little hill. This is a view of the synthetic liner. Synthetic liners on top of clay. And when we did our geo work up there, we found that there's clay some 30 to 40 feet in layers. So that is why this site was specifically targeted for the landfill. You have to have the right geochemistry, the dirt. You have to have the right elements in order to build it, in order to have multiple layers of protection before you could build one in order to prevent any groundwater or any contamination into the aquifers. This is, I don't know if you folks could see this, but this is what I'm talking about when I'm saying fencing. It's hard to see, but here's a truck. Here's the fence. It's some 40 feet high. And then we're going to have some active berms on the outside. This is quite the feat of what we're doing in order to protect the area from any contamination, blowing debris, knowing that we have high winds in the area. So some of the things we're doing is tall protective fencing. We're also going to have internal fencing. In addition to these perimeter berms that we're doing and the external fencing, we're going to have internal fencing. As we're building the cells, we build layers of fencing and berms to capture the material. The other thing that we have in there is an effective litter management program. Every day, we go out and we're going to clean up the area, both inside the landfill and in the exterior. Here's a picture of a landfill that has this kind of fencing. And this is actually here in Colorado, not too far from Golden. And you could see that there's some million dollar homes right there within earshot of that landfill. So today's modern landfills, with this kind of technology and this kind of capacity, can keep a community safe, keep it from litter, keep it from contamination. And we're bringing this kind of technology to this landfill that we're building. We also have up there a very effective, we have our own weather station. There's a weather station right on site, which allows us the ability to monitor the wind. In fact, I was with the landfill manager just the other day, and we're looking at graphs, we're looking at daily wind patterns to see not only the direction, but the flow, so we know exactly how to govern our plans of action. Again, back to a little bit to the cleanup. We're using modern equipment, such as you see here, where once we captured a material on the fences, we could go with some pretty good technology to just clean it right up. And that's a part of our effective cleanup and management plan.
It's a vacuum, it's a vacuum, right?
That is a vacuum. It's hard to see in that picture, but that is a rolling vacuum that goes on the back of a truck. And that thing is like, it's like a shot back on steroids, I'll tell you. If you're standing next to it, it'll rip your pants right off. Timeline, folks. As Lori mentioned, we have multiple projects. And I'm the project director. That's why they brought me on, to handle some of this stuff. And not only are we building a transfer station that we already started, the works, in 2019, but our transfer station's looking to be built right about 2022. Our landfill, we already started the work as far as the siding, all the engineering work. We've hired top-notch consultants to help us with our permit aspect. These are big projects. They take multiple years, but we want to do them right. So by 2023, we envision our landfill being active, ready to go. We're also doing our compost operation from 2019 up to 2021. We're also doing, looking at a construction and demolition project for reduction of the materials. And we're also looking at the integration of composting, not only doing yard waste, but also food waste as part of our program. This alone, we're spending over $40 million. And this is money that the Commissioners have said we've done a wonderful job of keeping that in reserve. This is not costing the taxpayers a penny. This is something that the community and the county already has in their bank. And that's all I have. I'm keeping it very brief. We do have some printouts, some handouts on the location for you, and I will be available to answer any questions.
Yeah, Richard.
Okay, where are we, what are you going to do with the collection sites you have now on Al Canyon?
The drop-offs that we have, they will still be in place. So we will continue to have those, so the public can continue to drop them off and utilize them. So all the, what we call the drop-off sites, all the satellite sites, will still be in, in operation. It will go to the landfill. It will go to the landfill. Depending on how far the distance is, we will pick it up and bring it to the landfill. So the landfill, the new landfill, is not going to have this smorgasbord of daily traffic. It's not going to have the ability to have all the residents come in and all the smaller operations. We're still utilizing our current drop-off centers.
So we have, we have an Al Canyon transfer station. We have one in Red Feather.
Correct.
Those will obviously come straight to the land, new landfill.
We have one right here as well.
We have one in Wellington. We have one in Berthoud. That'll probably go to the, that'll go to the old landfill site.
Correct.
We transferred, we have an Estes Park one. What else we have? How many else?
Oh, gee, we have.
We have a bunch of them.
Four, five, we have like, almost eight. I don't know them all off the top of my head. I'm fair, I've only been in, with the community for two months. But I've been focused on my projects here. But we do have all the continuing transfer stations, all the drop-offs that will continue to service the community, so that is not changing. Yes?
A couple of years ago, we had some major hailstorms. We lost some airspace in the current landfill. And then the spring, we had another one. Did we lose additional airspace that's going to cut the lifespan of this current one that increases the timeline or shortens the timeline on this particular project? When that hit, that was my first thought, that, oh my gosh, we're losing airspace on the, on the landfill again. What do we have if, if we have another one of those next spring? What are we looking at?
That is an excellent question. And that's one of the reasons why this landfill is on fast track. Currently, we have about four to five years of airspace available in our current landfill. And one of the things that we're planning to do, once our landfill, our new landfill is available and our transfer station is up and running, our goal is to transfer all the MSW right away to the new landfill. Keep the current landfill with the airspace for any construction and demolition material. So we're saving the space that we have now, like a battery cell, for those particular incidents and try to extend the life of the current landfill for these types of situations. That's why we're on an aggressive, very fast track.
And, and you correctly identified something, Jeff. That's why it's such a big deal to keep construction and demolition waste out of the landfill. That's why it's specifically a separate item on this, on this proposal, because it's not very compactable. You talk, I mean, hailstorms, but also the floods in 2013, we had a lot of debris. The fire, the High Park fire contributed a lot of debris. And, you know, wood and concrete and that kind of stuff, you can't compress it. I mean, regular trash, you can get that stuff pretty low, right?
Yes, sir.
You could smash that stuff as flat as a pancake. That, concrete doesn't compress. So that's a reason, that's another reason why you want to try to divert that stuff. It eats a lot of space. Yes, sir?
So a couple of things is, the meeting last year, they were trying to determine if that was going to be an open debris landfill or if they were going to bail it into huge bales and bring it out here. I mean, I think it should be bailed because of the wind. The wind, the last year and a half, hasn't been nothing compared to what it can be. And there should have been a, a wind meter put out there 10 years ago to study, not two years or a year ago. And then also, so has that been determined of what kind of landfill it's going to be? Are they going to bail it? Or is it going to be just open pit type of deal and smash it down? And then also, what about the high tension electrical lines? Are they going to have to be moved?
So I'll take the last question first. The high tension electrical lines will not be moved. Those, we're actually going to be built around them. We're actually going to leave that. If you look at the site, there's two hemispheres, one on the east and one on the west, with the electrical lines just going right in the middle. As far as the bail fill, that was a study that was done and it was looked at for those intensive operations. When we looked at it in more detail, we realized that if the winds are blowing that high, even if we have a bail fill, we're not going to be out there anyway. So the landfill is going to be closed. What we decided to do, what made more sense, because the, when we did a study, we looked at the baler. It would require a building with two balers. Well, that's going to cost $19 million. And we said, when we looked at this project and said, we got $40 million to work with, we want to do all this other things instead of building a bail fill. The alternative plan that we came up with is to expand the current transfer station with, instead of one day holding capacity, three days holding capacity. So if the winds are blowing that hard, where the trucks can't even go down the road, we are going to hold on to all the material and not even bring it up here. And that's, I think it's a better option for the community because even with a bail fill, you're going to be bailing it and still transporting it out. And I ran balers for many years, and I know that they're not 100%. And you're still going to get debris because you have to carry them out or through the roads and get them up here. So we looked at that. We did a study, HDR consultant, spent a lot of time in it. When I came on board, I looked at it as well. I'm an engineer. And I realized that this is not a feasible option. So we came up with actually a better option, keeping that material where it is, down on Taft Hill Road, and just keeping it down there until we're ready to bring it up. And it is compacted. So all the material, it's not an open dump. It is compacted material. We actually use compactors, and we're keeping the material governed. And then we top it off with topsoil, so you don't have an open dump with blowing material.
You may want to expand that to a week or 10 days.
That's the good news, is that we do have some additional places for storage. And so one of the things that I learned from Lou when we talked about this, the bail station versus the current trucks, is the weight doesn't change. So even if you bail the trash, you still can't haul more in one truck. It's the same volume. We don't gain anything in the new landfill by using the baling system compared to the compacted trash that we have already. And so as we looked at that $19 million price tag as well as the repairs that are oftentimes needed for these balers, we really believe that there's better value for the county and for the region in going to this system. All the loads, the transfer of the trash will be covered. And so it's not like we're going to have compacted loads of trash without being covered.
Yes, did that answer your question, sir? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. And one of which is, how much of the construction refuge, refuse can be recycled as opposed just to compacted? Seems like there'd be a lot of wood and cement and things like that that could be recycled. And also, what do you mean by airspace? And why would a hailstorm affect the, the landfill?
So I'll answer the last one. So construction and demolition material has.
You got to run for office, man. You only answer the questions you want. You're good at the game. It's pretty, it took me years to figure this out.
Construction and demolition material has what's called a bulk density, meaning the mass and space that it takes, probably about 180 pounds a cubic yard. Municipal solid waste has a density, a bulk density, about 500 pounds a cubic yard. That means for every yard of material that you put in there, you're going to get more tonnage or more pounds in a space with MSW in comparison to construction and demolition material. It takes up a lot of volume, as the Commissioner pointed out. That said, construction and demolition material is something that we want to target because we know it will take up a lot of space that we could use for other materials. Therefore, we want to target that kind of separation system. We're actually looking and talking to some companies right now in developing this operation of how can we separate the construction and demolition material? The technology's out there. The big problem that we're having is markets. There's no markets for shingles. There's very limited markets for drywall because of the gypsum. Plenty of markets for wood. So there's a variation of what we can separate. In fact, this year, we're actually looking at developing a pilot project with a company. We're actually in studies right now to try to do this, to further the market development of these materials. And this is something that we're looking at internally this is something that we're looking at internally, because we don't wanna put in a facility and have no markets for these materials. It's like the field of dreams. So, we are taking a very progressive approach and want to get into the market development. Now, I don't know if you know a lot of this, but there was a recent tax that was just passed, uh, where the landfills are being, there's a surcharge, about $2.40 that is going into a fund to bring in companies. We're trying to attract companies to come in and do something with our recyclable materials. So, the county can't go into the business of, hey, we're gonna make shingles out of shingles, or we're gonna go this out of this. No, we need private enterprise to come in and make this happen. So, the state has actually put this into effect to try to attract these businesses. And, we know these businesses and we're trying to get this development in work.
So, just as an example, and I'll get to you in just a second. These guys are very, very creative. They wanna keep tipping fees as low as possible for you, the consumer. And, so, we've done all kinds of different things to try to, to try to market different stuff that's created at the landfill and things that we're able to pull out and reuse. I was just, it's a, it's remarkable, actually. We are, we had a private company come in and they are mining the land, the, the old landfill down between Lovin and Fort Collins. And, they're capturing the methane and they're injecting that into the XL Energy gas line. And, so, we're selling the methane from our trash as it breaks down to use as natural gas to heat homes. And, so, we're trying to be very creative. And, so, if there's a way to, if there's a way to make money by reusing your trash, Steve Gillette will figure it out. He's not here tonight, Dave, but a lot of people know him. He'll figure it out. I mean, if there's a way to get, if there's a way to extract oil out of shingles, we'll find somebody who'll do it. And, we'll, and we'll make money on it, if we, if there's a way to do it. I promise you that. Yeah?
I think your second question was about how does, how does a storm impact the landfill cells? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. That airspace is, um, when he showed the, the picture of the new landfill and how you could see how far down you go, and you talk about a cell, if you imagine, I think of curtains, right? With the cells that are inside those blinds or drapes or whatever they are. That is a cell that has to be treated in a certain way in a landfill. And, shingles take up a lot of space in there as well. Right up there with concrete and wood and other debris. So, when the hailstorms come through and you have 20,000 roofs that have to be replaced, that is way more than what the average roof replacement would be for your region. And then they just take all those cells away, so they can't put any other material in.
So, if you, if you think about it, I don't get to you, just, I keep interrupting you. You get a bag of your trash out of your kitchen, you take it out of your kitchen and it's this big or whatever, you know, here to here. And, you, if you throw that away and we haul it to the landfill and they drive the compactor over it, it got, it gets this thick. I mean, that, it literally is that thick. If you take a comparable pile of shingles that's that high, they can't, they won't compress. I mean, they, that's how much room they take. And, so, they eat this much space versus this much space, for an equivalent amount. And, so, uh, and concrete and wood and all those things are the same. You just can't, you just can't compress them. So, they eat, as you might imagine, just imagine it, they eat a lot of room. So, any kind of catastrophic or act of God type of event, really, it hits us very, very hard.
The reason they talk about airspace is, as I understand it, and I know less of anybody up here about it, but what I've learned from Stephen is, that when you permit a landfill, what they give you is a maximum elevation that the top of the landfill can be. That's how they regulate the amount of trash environmentally that the permits will allow to be placed there. They don't weigh it, 'cause weight doesn't really matter. What, what they measure is the top of the landfill. So, at our current landfill, we have a top elevation that that landfill cannot go above. So, we're constantly going up to the airspace, to the, to the ceiling that we have. So, that's why they compact the trash, because you wanna, you wanna stay under that airspace and put as much stuff down there. But, that's why they talk about airspace. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. That's a great analogy. The other one, I think, is, you know, let's say you're at your house and you have one of these big chests. And then you have a pillow. The pillow's gonna take up a lot of space. That's your C and D. Where you have books. I could fit more books than I can pillows. Well, books are your garbage. The, the C and D is the big pillow that's just big, old and fluffy. And, that all has to go into that box. And, that's what's being regulated. So, that's another analogy that we could use. Yes, sir?
Uh, yes. They, uh, we're talking about shingles and that, but I, you probably heard about them. Over in Windsor, they had an outfit that was recycling shingles. And, they got, I don't know, the state gotten involved. Do you know how that ended up, you know, or if, if that's gonna be a problem for our landfill?
So, I don't know exactly what happened with that particular entity. Uh, what we're looking at right now with shingles, right now, we are landfilling them, because we don't have any viable markets for them. We are talking to some other companies right now that are trying to do that development. The big problem with shingles is that magic word, asbestos. So, anytime you have to deal with shingles, you have to have an effective management plan to deal with shingles that do have asbestos. Because, as they come in, you don't, you can't differentiate one from the other. You know, they're both, everything is there. So, that makes it extremely challenging for a company to, to have a viable program. There are abilities to extract the oils out of them. There is ability to do some other things with shingles. There's a lot of research going on right now. But, what the commissioner says is that we're looking for effective ways to do it, where we could handle all types of shingles, or be able to differentiate the ones that we can recycle from those that we can't. That's part of our technology and our processor.
So, my numbers are based on the meeting back in December at the Planning Commission. Um, the paperwork there essentially said that the tipping cost is going to be the same or more than the current private landfills in the area. So, why are we spending a bunch of public money on a landfill that's gonna cost the same or more to use than ones that private investors have funded?
So, landfills, if you don't mind, I'll, so, landfills are all, have to be in a competitive rate. Now, think about what we're doing. We're closing a landfill and we're transferring all that material up here, you know, to a new landfill. So, we have to govern the cost of that transportation. We're building a transfer station. We're putting the material in the truck and we're transporting some 25 miles north. We're gonna have what's called a tipping fee there at the transfer station, where the material is gonna come up. That tipping fee has to be competitive to alt and to the other landfills in the area. So, we have that inherent cost associated with our lack of processing, but our transportation.
Let me take a shot, can I take a shot at the two? So, um, we, we of course favor the free market. Obviously, any chance we can, we can use it. Um, this is, a landfill is actually not a very good example of a free market system, frankly, because it's so highly regulated and there's, frankly, there's only two or three companies, or four maybe, in the, in the country that do a vast majority of it. Um, one thing that we think is very beneficial about the Laramo County landfill is a private citizen can still haul a pickup load of trash into our landfill. If you do, if you try to do that in alt, I mean, I don't know. I, I think it's 75 or 80 bucks.
That's what I've heard too, yeah.
And, if you, if you come to our, the Laramo County landfill, it's about 15 right now. So, yeah, to, to double haul it, to haul it, you know, whatever, 40 miles round trip further, to build a line landfill, our old one isn't, is that gonna cost more to haul? Absolutely, it's gonna cost more. Um, and we are gonna have to pass it on to the payers. But, you're still gonna have the opportunity to bring in, um, you're gonna, your wife's gonna make you clean the garage, and you're gonna have to haul a pickup load of stuff. And, you're gonna, you're gonna know where you can come. You're gonna be able to come to us to do it.
But, if it costs more than the private ones, nobody's gonna come there.
No, it's, well, I don't think it will cost more. I mean, I think-
We're gonna be-
The county's own estimate shows it-
You gotta use the mic. You gotta use the mic.
Per ton, yeah.
The county's own estimate shows it is costing the same or more than the private-
But, that's offset by the additional transportation cost that it would take to get out to alt. If we price our landfill above alt, no one will be there. We're not gonna do that.
If I'm a trash hauler, that's exactly my point.
Exactly. We will, we will make the tipping fee-
The county's estimate is that it's going to cost more to run than the private landfill.
Well, the estimate, I don't really care about the estimate. The way it's gonna work is, we are gonna have the tipping fee so that people will come to it. Otherwise, we have to.
So, you're gonna subsidize it with tax dollars?
No.
No, it does, it's not subsidized at all with tax dollars now.
It's not now and it won't be.
If we don't have a public landfill and there's one private landfill, what do you think the rates are gonna do when there's no competition?
Guess how much the fees are gonna be if there's no competition?
Plus, with a public landfill, do you think the private landfill's gonna do all of the recycling and diversion? No. Because it's so cheap to bury stuff in Colorado. That's what they're gonna do. That's just cheap for the bottom line.
We won't have any money left over to build the recycle centers when we build the landfill. I've, I've got all the paperwork. I'll show it to you afterwards.
Well, we can talk during the break. Everybody else can have cookies, but we can talk during the break. But, trust me, we are the, we are the other entity in the marketplace as an option, is Laramo County. It's Waste Management and Alt, or it's Laramo County. That's your, that's the only two competitors. We actually do more to control the cost of, of trash collection than, than probably any other private sector entity in, anywhere.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we evaluate, we evaluate a lot of options, having a private, we, we evaluated having a private hauler come in, or a company come in and operate this. We just get out of the business completely. And, we, so we looked at, we looked at 100 different iterations of, of what we could do. And, we think this is the most viable plan. Never ones to, um, never ones to, to share controversy. We're here to talk about one of everyone in Wellington's favorite subjects, stormwater mitigation. Yes. Yes, you bet. Um, so, actually, one thing that everyone in, in Wellington, I think, pretty much agrees on is that the, those really large SCS dams just north of town had tremendous impact on mitigating storm, storm flows. That, that used to occur a lot of, a lot in the 60s and 70s. I mean, it's pretty dangerous. I mean, they, you could have some really severe storm events before those dams were put in place. Well, when were the dams built?
Late 70s, early 80s.
Late 70s, early 80s, Richard? Do you agree? Sometime in the 70s, probably. Um, and there's three, there's three of those dams. They're, they're large. Everyone here knows what, knows what they are and where they are. Um, so, because of the amount of development that has occurred downstream of those dams, both in Wellington and in Fort Collins and Windsor and Timneth, um, the NRCS and the State of, State Engineers' Office have said that, uh, the dams have, uh, need additional protections in order to maintain their high hazards standard of, from a protection standpoint. And, so, um, that's a, that's a big, that's a big deal. And Eric Tracy, who's our, uh, county engineer, who you all know well, uh, worked on stormwater his whole career, has no, no life at all, other than that, is gonna tell you about, um, kinda where we are standing with the dams as they are, what needs to happen to kinda bring them up to the modern standard, and maybe kind of some real elementary or, or beginning stages of what we plan to do, maybe to try to mitigate some of that. So, Eric, why don't you go ahead and go?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Donnelly.
Sure.
Uh, so, I, I don't claim that, uh, stormwater is nearly as exciting as landfills. So, I'll try to, I'll, I'll try to make this quick tonight and we'll, we'll see if we can get some information, good information out to you and, and see if I can answer any questions that you may have. But, I did wanna give a little bit of background. Uh, you may have started hearing a little bit more discussion about what we call the B dams, or the Box Elder dams. Uh, even if you haven't heard of it, if you ventured north of Wellington a little bit, I'm sure you've seen them. You may not know exactly what they were, but they're big berms. And, you know, there's one of them that's, you know, pretty close to a mile long. So, they're very big dams, actually, um, that were put in, in the, it was the late 70s, early 80s is when these ones were put in. I, I think the NR, they're the SCS at the time was putting some in, uh, prior to that as well. But, these were put in, in the late 70s and early 80s. And, the purpose of them at the time was, uh, kinda twofold. One was to protect agricultural land, and then also to provide some protection to the town of Wellington. So, the topic is coming up again, and it's a big topic. It's an important topic. So much so, that the commissioners have put the B dams as part of the strategic plan that's being developed right now. And, I've been asked to, to work on that as part of the strategic plan. So, uh, to give you a little bit of, of background, again, uh, they were constructed, um, mainly for the agricultural purpose and to protect Wellington. And, if you can, if you can think of Wellington back in the late 70s, early 80s, it looked a lot different than it does today, right? Uh, yeah, yeah. Good or bad, right? Um, but, uh, you know, at, at the time, it was Laramo County. It was the Soil Conservation Service, which today is called the NRCS, the National Resources Conservation Service. Um, and, so, it was Laramo County, a few of the Soil Conservation Districts, and North Pooter partnered together, uh, to build these dams to provide that protection. And, at the time, with the purpose that they were built for, they were built to a certain standard, okay? And, they evaluated the risk of a catastrophic, catastrophic failure of these dams, and what implication that would have downstream. And, so, they were built to a certain standard. Now, what has happened is, after they were built, uh, North Pooter Irrigation Company, uh, they, they signed an agreement that they would maintain the structures over, over time. And, they've, they've done that over the years. Uh, but, the, the NRCS, which was the SCS, the Soil Conservation Service, uh, they still have a, a pretty good interest in, in these dams. And, a, a while back, uh, they decided that due to development that has occurred downstream of the dams, not within the 100-year floodplain that we really regulate, but within what would be a flood path and a catastrophic failure of one of the dams. That's what they were looking at. And, when they evaluated that, in conjunction with North Pooter, uh, who is, is really kinda the owner at this point, uh, they determined that due to the development that happened downstream, like Commissioner Donnelly said, uh, that these dams, uh, have a lot higher risk than they did when they were originally built. So, they've gone from the classification they were at, and the State Engineers' Office, who regulates dams in the state of Colorado, has bumped them up to a high-risk dam classification. So, it's not that the dams are failing, or they haven't been maintained. The dams are perfectly fine. They just have been inspected recently, actually. Uh, but, the issue is that they don't meet the standard for the risk that's downstream. Now, when this was presented to North Pooter, uh, there were a few options that were also presented. And, North Pooter, being really the ones on the hook at the, at the time, uh, obviously wanna go with the cheapest option. And, the cheapest option for them would be to breach the dam, get rid of the dam. Okay? Now, if you can imagine the, the impact that that would have on, uh, Laramo County, the town of Wellington, clear down into Fort Collins, okay? So, that's when, uh, the communities got together. And, really, what we're trying to do right now is form an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement, uh, with, uh, Laramo County, uh, the town of Wellington, the town of Timneth, the city of Fort Collins, and North Pooter Irrigation Company, um, so that we can, as a partnership, move forward with a better solution that will provide the protection that they've provided in the past. Okay. Now, I, I know that when we talk about B dams and Box Elder, there's the B word in, especially up here in the area. Um, but, um, what we need to consider are the consequences of that option of removing the dam. And, if we were to remove the dam, it would completely remap the floodplain, you know, all the way down, there, through even to the Pooter River. Um, you know, it would put a good majority of the town of Wellington into the floodplain. And, it-
It's the cheapest option.
It would be the cheapest option.
Nobody's, we're not proposing, that's not being proposed.
We think it's the cheapest option.
No, we're, we're not proposing that. And, that's why we're trying to form this partnership so that we can have a better solution than removing the dam. We don't want to remove the dam at all, okay? Um, but, the State Engineers' Office, they regulate the dams. They say, if this dam doesn't meet the standards for the risk that's downstream, you need to improve the dam so that it does. Or, remove it.
That makes no sense.
Okay?
No sense.
No, it doesn't make sense.
Take it out, that lets the water go.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
But, in the event of a catastrophic failure, if the dam weren't overtop, because they weren't built to the, the same standard, a catastrophic failure would be catastrophic.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we are moving forward as a county, um, and the partnerships, to try to find a solution to, um, meet, you know, to satisfy the state, so that those dams can remain in place and provide the protection to the community.
So, I think, Eric, the, the proposal is for all of the entities to get together and fund a study. Cause we don't know exactly. There's several options that we think are available to, um, maintain the dams, so that if they did, if the water did go over the top of the dams, it wouldn't eat through the whole dams and flood everything down below. You need spillway options and that. And, there's several different designs and ways to do that and different costs. So, I think the, the request that's immediately on the table is for all the entities to fund an engineering study that will look at all of the options and the costs and benefits of the options. And then we'll know exactly what it's gonna cost, cause we really don't know how much it will cost. Some of the things I've heard are pretty interesting.
Yeah.
And, pretty amazing, but-
There were initial studies done, again, by the NRCS, working with North Pooter. Uh, they did present, uh, a handful of options. Uh, one reason why, uh, we're kinda moving forward as a partnership, uh, we're trying to do it fairly quickly, is because the NRCS does have, uh, some grant money.
Thought that was my hearing aid there.
Does have some grant money available to help to pay for the cost of the mitigation. And that grant funding would pay for 65% of the project. When we look at the options, though, the NRCS has a much higher standard than the, than the state would have if we were to use their money. So this study is really looking to see, is it, is it more feasible to utilize the NRCS grant funding, and do the options that, that they would agree with, or would it be more feasible to, to do something different? There's been a whole, a whole different, or a whole list of options. You know, there's, there's turf reinforcement mats over the dam, there's articulated concrete blocks was an option. I don't know if everybody's familiar with fuse plugs within a spillway, which is actually, it's, it's designed to essentially wash out during an overtopping event, so you don't have a catastrophic failure of the dam itself, just the fuse plug. You know, th- those are options, that are options that would satisfy the state, but the NRCS doesn't accept those. So the option the NRCS would like to see is that the dams be faced with roller-compacted concrete, and that, that's what, that's what the, yes, that, that's what the, our consultants are looking at right now. So as Commissioner Johnson said, currently, we're, we're working together to try to get this IGA put together, to do this initial study. Every one of the entities, we're very concerned about what the costs are going to be. We don't want to jump in and create another Box Elder.
It's jumping.
Yeah. So what we want to do is, you know, we, we want to see exactly what the costs are going to be, and move forward as, as a group to, to make that happen. Yeah, the, the question was, how much is that initial study going to cost? Each of the entities is contributing $50,000. So we have $200,000 lined up already. We're still waiting on the town of Wellington to sign the IGA.
Okay. They'll come around.
If, if they do, we'll have up to 250.
Anybody have any questions about this? Very interesting stuff. Yeah. You have a microphone.
I know you, I know you talked about, you know, each entity, who are they? What cities, entities are going to be putting money into this?
So right now, the, the partnership being formed is between Laramo County, the town of Wellington, we're, we're hoping to get them to sign soon, the city of Fort Collins, the town of Timneth, and North Pooter Irrigation Company. So tho- those are the five that are moving forward in this initial phase. There may be potential that we look at other partnerships being a part of the actual project.
Windsor would be part of that?
Windsor.
We're in, in, we're talking to Windsor, yes. But as, as you know, when, when you have a flood, and when you're looking at a catastrophic failure of a dam, you're going to get this surge or this wave that happens. And the further downstream that goes, that wave is going to start to dissipate. So the impact to Windsor isn't going to be as much as it would be to Wellington, for example.
I know after the Box Elder...
You've got to use the microphone.
After the Box Elder, when they were putting in the retention dams and stuff down the Box Elder going towards the Pooter, there was a lot, with my understanding of it, is that Timneth didn't put much money into that at the start?
At the start, they didn't, but they have, they have joined since then, and they have put a considerable amount.
You know, gave money back to the other entities that put the upfront money?
They've been contributing money to the, to the projects, yes.
They bought, they bought in, I think, essentially, is what they did. I don't know, do you know the details, Richard? They did buy in.
But we didn't give any money back, because we...
Yeah, nobody's given us, nobody ever gives you money back.
And then, well, I don't know if this is just hearsay, but people were saying that, you know, we put all the infrastructure up here, and then Fort Collins and Timneth raked the benefits of their land being taken out of a floodplain. So shouldn't there be some restitution sent back upstream for the amount of acre-feet that we're storing?
I, I will say that one of the projects in the Box Elder project took a, a very big chunk of Wellington out of the floodplain. So, you know, there's been benefit to each of the communities, and to Laramo County with, you know, road infrastructure.
Weren't most of those downstream from Wellington?
What's that?
Weren't most of those dams, or...
No.
For the, where were the other ones up there?
The, the very first, the very first project that Box Elder did was to divert floodflows off of Coal Creek, north of Wellington, north of Wellington, through the irrigation canal over to Clark Reservoir, that reduced the flows through the town of Wellington and pulled the schools out of the floodplain, and I don't know how many homes out of the floodplain.
But weren't there some downstream that got put back in the floodstream because of that? I mean, not the one up here by Coal Creek, but the ones further down, there were places that were out of it that were put into it because of the retention.
I don't know about that. There's a, but you're talking about, is, is not untrue. There's a tremendous amount of that ground in north Fort Collins around the Mulberry Corridor that got removed from the, from the floodplain, and is now developable ground for the city of Fort Collins in the future. And that's true, that's absolutely correct. You're absolutely right.
And if you'd like to have a further discussion on the Box Elder stuff, I can talk to you offline.
Yep. Only in Wellington is B-dam a four-letter word, man. I'm telling you. You bet. Does anybody else have any questions about this? Wonderfully interesting item. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
What's the potential timeframe for the study and making decisions on what kinds of actions to take?
Okay. The agreement that we have with the consultant that's working on that is that they will have their portion of the work and study done prior to March of next year. And the reason for that fast track is because if we can get their study done in March, we know whether to apply for the NRCS grant funding or not, which is due shortly thereafter.
Yeah. So NRCS will give us up to 65% of the funds, but their, their solutions that they want to see are very, very much more expensive. Like, like Eric said, a mile-long dam cased in concrete, right? That's, as you can imagine, that's very expensive. The state has a lot of less expensive options, but they don't offer the match that NRCS does. So we're going to evaluate all the different options, we're going to see what's most cost-effective, what's the most feasible for us to, to move forward with. Well, like he said, again, we're in the very interim stages, and so we'll have something, we'll have some information early next year, and we'll, we'll make sure we get it out to people, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right. So we did set aside some time for the good of the order, anything you want to ask us. If you want to ask Commissioner Johnson, or is going on vacation, go for it. We'll try to, we'll try to get you an answer. Anything anybody wants to talk about, we'd be happy to talk about at this time. Yes, sir?
With the school district building the middle school, high school structure, are all three, the county, the state, CDOT people, and the city of Wellington, working together with the school district to figure out how we're going to have a functional transportation system out of this?
Michelle, we're going to let Lori talk about that. Sorry.
The short answer is yes. All three entities have been talking about it. The more difficult answer is there's no funding set aside, other than what the school district has in their bond initiatives to make improvements at that intersection. And so it wasn't on the state project to be funded, it wasn't in a county project to be funded, and so we're working on what other options could we have, and how could the town participate in a way that could resolve these situations. But it's a complicated, it's a complicated project, and involves all the different jurisdictions.
But you said three partners, but there's four.
Then I'm sorry, I left one out.
Okay, which one?
Because everybody has been at the table talking about it.
Okay.
CDOT too, yeah.
CDOT, the county...
The school district.
In the town.
The school district and the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, good question. Yes, sir.
I was wondering, could you, been hearing all kinds of things, but what's going on with Highway 287? You know, they were, I heard talk that they were going to move it out to I-25 down by Berthad, and then take it off up here at Al Canyon.
Yeah, that was a, a project that came up for discussion, maybe, maybe 12 or 14 months ago, by CDOT. It had, the conversation had started related to the northern project, related to the Glade Reservoir, and since 287 needed to be rerouted then, would it continue to be rerouted and then connect to I-25? And then what CDOT was proposing is, then they would, what's called de-evolve, which is remove 287 as a state highway through all the communities going south. And that was under discussion for a short time, and we have not heard anything more from CDOT since then.
I thought it was a US highway.
Yeah, they were allegedly going to study that. So Lori's right. So they were thinking, there's a couple reasons. Number one is that they're already going to, they're already going to move 287 if Glade Reservoir's built, and so they thought, instead of taking that money and rebuilding the road, what if we put it on to, like, for instance, Al Canyon, or something like that? That's part of their study. And, and just routed traffic over to the interstate from there. And the, the other reason for, that they were thinking about that is they, they, and this is a legitimate question, frankly. They're saying in 20 years, I mean, even right now, but, but especially in 20 years, in 50 years, do you really want a truck route right through the middle of what's going to be, I mean, like, basically like downtown Denver, right? That's what that truck route is, it goes down I-25, down 287, down Riverside and Mulberry out to the interstate. And that's obviously...
It's now about what they've had through Fort Collins?
It's, that's how it is now. And so they, yeah, they've been saying, yeah, but in most major cities, you wouldn't have a truck route right through the middle of town. You'd skirt, you'd skirt the outsides, and, and so they, they really wanted to evaluate that and look at it. But, you know, like a lot of things we do, the devil's in the details. And so Lori's right, CDOT's not going to take extra lane miles of road, they can't maintain the damn lane miles they have. And so if they, for instance, let's just say, for example, that they made Al Canyon Road the new 287 bypass over to I-25, well, they're not going to keep the existing 287 that goes down from the county, down into Fort Collins, down through Loveland, they want, and down to Berthad or whatever, they want to get rid of those lane miles and get, and devolve them, as she said, to the, to the cities. Well, 287, most, actually, most of the asphalt on 287 is pretty good, but that's a big lift for local governments to take on the maintenance of all those roadways, right? And so there's a real balance there. I think Fort Collins would love to get truck traffic out of Fort Collins, but I don't know that they want to take on all of Highway 287 through Fort Collins either, as far as maintenance and upkeep of that roadway. And the same with Loveland. Loveland probably doesn't have near as many trucks, and so they're, they're more reticent to enter into any kind of agreement like that. So where we left it, we talked about it last year, and, and we said, hey, if you want it, you got money, you, you know, you've got, you've got people that can do some planning and study this stuff, go look at it and tell us what you think it, it looks like. But, but, so that's where we sit right now.
But now, aren't they already working on Al Canyon?
Yeah, so the ca...
What was the question?
Okay, so the question was, aren't you already working on Al Canyon? Or they, he said they, but he means us. Where are they? Lucky to get out of here alive tonight. Holy shit. But, yeah, yeah, we are. And that, that's a, that's kind of an interesting dilemma, right? Because if, if you did make that into a truck route, it, you know, you might want to enhance and expand those bridges, and there's a number of bridges on that, on that route. I mean, there's at least, how many are on there? You're doing four, we're doing four this year. We're doing four bridges this year. And every place where there's a little irrigation ditch, we really got a structure. I mean, it's not necessarily a bridge like we might think of, but it's, it's something. And so it's got to bear the weight of trucks, and it already does, frankly, quite a few. But you might have to make sure you've got the width and things like that that you'd have for a state highway. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's kind of an interesting detail, but we're working on this roadway, and we're building a county road, standard road, and not a US highway. And so, but we want to try to do, though, is in the event that something like this did happen, it wouldn't just be, our projects wouldn't just be throwaways, right? We want to make sure that we can accommodate whatever happens in the future.
That's why they're moving the power poles and stuff over?
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't, I haven't, I haven't driven up and looked at it, but that would, that would be why, yeah. I mean, you got to, you want to do some widening if you can, and make sure you get some right-of-way for the future.
So they're not really planning anything down by Berthad then?
No, we're not. Nothing, no, nothing that, nothing that we would say is definite in any way. So what they talked about was north side of that corridor, vacating it and taking it down Al Canyon. South end, they were talking about maybe like 119 in Longmont and moving, and so there's a, I don't know what that is, 40 miles of, or more of, of state highway that they would, they would get rid of. It's a hell of a deal for them, right? It's 40 miles, but it's, it's four lanes. I mean, it's, it's 120 miles or 160 miles, a road. I mean, it's a great deal for those guys if they could do it. The, the problem is, is that a lot of the communities probably would not want to be interested in that, that necessarily. Okay? Yeah, yes, ma'am. Hi.
Hi. So the commissioners will know that my latest interest has been in oil and gas development in the county. But just to frame this for anyone in Wellington that might not be aware, that we have Senate Bill 181 from the state level that allows local control now for municipalities and counties. And recently, the county had an event that explained what the task force is working on looking forward. And I also understand that the county has decided not to hold up on writing the regulations for oil and gas and wait until the state delivers their new regulations. The difference in the regulations being, we have a, a whole new Colorado Oil and Gas Commission that is now prioritizing public health and safety over industry profit, and they are working very fast on those rules, but won't have them done for a year. But the county is apparently very eager to roll out rules before that's done. I'm not sure how easy it could be to reverse, and I'm wondering why the rush, why, why we feel like we need to, to do this more quickly than the state.
That, actually, the reason why we're rushing is because a number of folks you included asked us to adopt regulations on, on oil and gas development in the county. Quite honestly, because there's...
We, we asked to adopt regulations that would be in compliance with the state's new plan for safety and public health.
And they will be. Our regulations will be land use regulations. We have the ability to regulate land, land use in this county. And, and just, and just let me make one point, for everyone who maybe doesn't understand all the details of this, currently, right now, in Laramo County, oil and gas use is a use by right. There's no permitting requirement at all to go out and drill an oil well in Laramo County. You do have to go to the state and get state permitting, but there's no local regulatory authority over oil and gas in this county. There actually is in, in Weld County, interestingly enough. In the past, there has never been any type of regulation with regards to oil and gas development in this county. Last year, Steve Johnson and myself, and I think it was Sean Dority at the time, we've worked with four commissioners in District One, I can't keep them straight all the time, went to our planning staff, because we'd heard concerns from, from residents, primarily from South Loveland and the Berthad area, where that's where most of the, really, most of the oil development has occurred in the county. And they said, hey, here's what's going on. In the, in the past, and if you look a map of where, of where the wells exist in the county, every quarter section has a well right in the middle. I mean, down there along the 402 corridor, for instance, we talked about that a few times tonight. Every quarter section will have a well drilled right in the middle of it. Well, they go in there and they drill that really quickly, and they put the pump in, and then they, they pull out. But what they do now, the way they operate now, and I'm no expert on this, trust me, but they'll go in and they'll do maybe, they might do 10 different drilling, drills in one pad location, so that they're a much longer period of time. I mean, they might be there for nine months, or even, I suppose, up to a year. And some of those bigger ones that they do, that you see, might have 25 different wells that they drill. They haven't done anything like that here, as far as I know, at this time. But we did have some larger well permits, applications to the state, that were like maybe 10, 10 different pads on one site. And so there's going to be impacts on that. And we, and we fully regulate other types of industrial uses, land uses in the county, things like gravel quarries, feedlots even, those are, those are intensive uses that, that the county requires land use approval to, to, to operate. And so we said, yeah, you know what? And so we said, it's, it doesn't seem like this industry is that much different because of the way it's, it's kind of evolved, where they're, they're, they're not just in and out anymore, they're, they're there for much longer, and we want to make sure that, that we mitigate the impacts of it, whether that's truck routes, or hours of operation, or, or dust, or, or... or dust, or odor, or air quality issues of any type. We want to make sure that we have land use regulations that surround that, just like we do with the gravel quarry, for instance. And so, so we went to our, our planning department. We said, we want to, we want to try to develop a process to look at this and look at putting some, some reasonable regulation in place. And, and quite honestly, I'm, I don't seek to ban oil and gas development in the county. And I know, I don't think, believe Commissioner Johnson does as well. And so we, what we do seek to do is regulate it, just like we do with any other type of industrial use. And so we, we said, we, the county said, well, we don't have, we don't have any regulations. So what are we, how are we going to develop regulations? And so we asked for applicants to apply to be part of a task force. We had very prescriptive types of roles that we wanted to see fill that task force. We had people from industry, absolutely. We had surface owners who, who had, who had oil and gas wells on their, on their property. We had mineral rights holders. We had people with public health backgrounds. We had folks who were climate, climatologists and things like that, who studied air patterns and all this stuff at CSU. And, and we, one thing we heard from you and your folks was that we didn't have anyone with a, with a medical background. Actually, we do have a physician's assistant that currently resides, sits on the board, but we didn't have a, a medical doctor. And so at the recommendation of, of you folks, we actually appointed, are appointing a medical doctor to serve on that task force as well. And so they're working right now to look at best practices, look at what other counties have done, look at what our, what our really abilities are as far as regulatory powers that we might have on, on various, on, on this type of land use. And they're going to bring recommendations to Board of County Commissioners. And so we're going to hold a series of public hearings. We, we encourage anyone who wants to participate to come out and talk to the Planning Commission and to the Board of County Commissioners. Let us know what you think about the, the strength or the weaknesses of the regulations. And, and we will either, we'll either adopt, adopt what the, what this task force recommends, or, or we will, we'll modify them, or who knows what we'll do. But we'll, we'll have a full public hearing process and we're going to put in land use rules and regulations in place. That's our promise.
Okay. If I could just interject, we're not really talking about a ban. I think there's a--
You can't really interject. I never stop talking.
All right.
Trust me, that's true.
There's, there's a big difference between a ban and rules at all, rules that would put public health as a priority. And I understand the process is taking place, but it does feel a little bit rushed, considering that I think the result, correct me if I'm wrong, of these rules would be to put them into a 20-year land use plan for the county.
So, so then your preference would be that we not adopt rules until we wait for the state and we just continue with the framework we have, which is no regulation?
That you would hold up on the permitting until the state gives us--
We do not have, we do not have a permit. I just told you, we have no regulations. It's a use by right. There's no, we wouldn't hold up any permit. There's no permit.
So let me share a few things.
Do you understand what I'm saying? No, I'm not trying to be harsh with you, but that's, do you understand what I mean? It's, it, you can, you can develop a dairy farm as a use by right in this county. You don't have to get any land use approval. You know that? And so you don't come to, we couldn't, we can't hold up your permit to start your dairy because there's no permitting process. If you get your state permits and things like that, you go ahead and start. That's what we're talking about, same thing.
Let me, let me add a couple of things.
Okay.
We do have a comprehensive land use plan. That is a 20-year document that is a general guideline for development for a 20-year period of time. The land use plan is not law. The law is the code, the land use code. We make adjustments to the land use code, those, that's all the time. So the, the code is, does not have to be changed once every 20 years. That's the comprehensive plan. That's a visionary document. And then a code is the details that implement that land use plan. So from my perspective, we don't, I don't think there's any danger in us adopting regulations before the state does. Because, for several reasons. One, we don't have any regulations now. So any regulations would be more protective of the public interest, in my mind, than none at all. Secondly, is we cannot be more lenient than any rules the state adopts. So if we set X as a regulation and the state said, no, it should be more than that, our regulation has to comply with the state. My understanding of the Senate bill is that we cannot reduce the state regulations. We can go above the state regulations. So if we had a regulation that the state did more of, we would not be circumventing or short-circuiting the state. In that case, we would need to update our ordinance to reflect the state. Or it could be that there's an area that the state doesn't regulate, that we regulate in our land use code. And--
Like truck routes, truck routing, for instance.
They probably won't regulate that.
We talked about that for, we talked about that about the landfill. I mean, it'll be the same with, and the state won't regulate that to the extent that the county will. You know, for instance, what? Okay, okay. So--
Okay, I, one last piece on this.
All right, really quick.
How would the county feel if any of the cities, well, I know Berthad, for instance, does have a suspension right now. Does the county have a position if Fort Collins would go back to the, three years ago, the voters put in suspension of permitting in Fort Collins city limits? What's going to happen?
That wouldn't affect us because we, in this arena, many things that the county does, we do inside of city limits as well. Health regulations, all of that apply within the cities. But in the land use arena, we have no jurisdiction inside town or municipal boundaries. So we don't tell the cities what to do. We shouldn't. They can do their own and we do, our jurisdiction is the unincorporated area.
Yeah. So just think about, think about the dairy farm, again, as an example. Windsor isn't going to permit a dairy farm in the middle of town either. So--
Does a dairy farm have setbacks?
We have, it wouldn't, it might not in the city. Well, it doesn't in the county. A dairy farm doesn't have any setbacks in the county, frankly. None.
That's what makes it a little different.
Right. Well, I don't, yeah, exactly. But you still have to meet the state standards. That's what, I think that was Steve's point. You have to meet the state, the state standards.
Whatever those regulations are.
Yeah. And those are, those include setbacks. Our, our regulations are meant to be supplemental to the state permitting requirements. We don't, you don't alleviate anyone or remove any of the state obligations just because the county has regulations also. It actually enhances the regulatory framework. Okay. Anything else? Yeah, Richard?
At a Wellington meeting-- I might have turned it off.
Oh.
There you go.
That was, that was not, that was by accident totally.
At a Wellington meeting, Commissioner Cofalas said it was all about safety. This, this task force.
For the kids, man.
Which, yeah, which personally, I don't think landowners got enough say on that task force, but it is the way it is. Well, I went home after that safety deal and looked to see how many people got killed by oil and gas drilling or delivery in the last 30 years. According to Google, in Laramo County, it's zero. But if you look at tubing on the Poota River, it's over 50. So why are you not trying to monitor that a little bit better and stop that? Because do 50 lives not matter to Laramo County?
They don't matter. Every life matters. All lives matter.
All human life is very precious. We agree.
I think that was a rhetorical question.
I think it was too. That's just, oh gosh.
But I, I will say that the task force will make recommendations. I suspect they'll come up with a menu of options. We will conduct public hearings. We will hear from a lot of citizens that weren't on the task force. We may take some of those. We may take a few of them. We may take more of them. I don't know. But they don't get to make the decision. All they do is do some background research and present some options to the commissioners.
Make recommendations.
And we listen to all the citizens of Laramo County. We don't make them all happy, but we listen to--
Yeah. So maybe just one second. So if we just step back from kind of that emotional aspect of oil and gas, we did a, we did a very similar thing. It used to be a horse boarding facility had to go through special review. No matter, regardless of the size of the parcel, regardless of the number of horses, every one of them was supposed to go through a special review approval, and none of them went through. And so neighbors turned in, one lady that ran one, and so she spent the whole next weekend driving around the county and finding every other horse boarding facility in the county and turning them all in. So they all would have had to, they all would either go through special review or shut down. And so we, we appointed a task force in that instance as well to develop some, some really, we, I think, they did, they were, they worked for over a year and a half, actually. You know, and it was a tremendous, it's a tremendous economic driver for our local economy, frankly, is agriculture and horses particularly. And, and they, they brought out some recommendations that were, were good and, and were the basis for the regulations we adopted, but they weren't, we did not carte blanche adopt the recommendations of that, of that task force. We, we did what we, it's too complicated to explain, but we did something more like a scalable system. I'm hurrying, I'm hurrying. Which had to, which had to do with like the size of your parcel, and then you could have so many horses. And as you got bigger, you could have more. It was real common sense, frankly. But we didn't adopt that carte blanche, the recommendation of the task force. We, we went through a full public process. We had a lot of little kids come and talk about their 4H horse. And it was, man, it was great. So we, I think we--
I just want to bring up the point that health and safety means a lot more than just death. We have had a very high increase, a kind of a surprising increase in the number of people who have developed asthma since they've been here. Children with asthma, our air quality, although it looks beautiful, is not good. We have failed the EPA. This EPA, we have failed the standards of air quality. And, and some of the contributions to that have to do with oil and gas.
Ask your question. Okay.
You have a question?
Yeah. And oil and gas has an impact to that. So get, take the, take the microphone.
That's it.
I'll talk. So, hey, for the last decade, just let me do, real briefly, and I don't want to get, I don't want, we're not talking politics.
Yeah, right.
We're not, we're not talking politics. And, but I'll just say this. And this is good news. Hopefully it'll make you happy. I've sat on the North Front Range Metropolitan Planning Organization for the last, over, over a decade, frankly. My hair was black when I started, just to give you an indication of how long I've been in there. And that's the lead air quality planning agency for this region of Colorado. What are you shaking your head for? You don't even know what I'm going to say yet. No, I'm tired. So, I will tell you this. We are, we are actually in violation of the EPA threshold for ozone. It's the only part of the Clean Air Act that we are currently in violation of, is ozone. All the other components, we're actually, particulates and things like that, we're, 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 we're in compliance. We are not in, and so whose EPA we're actually out of compliance with is the Obama standard that was implemented. We actually have just met the Bush White House standard, which was 60 parts, 65 parts per billion. Am I saying that right, Doctor?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five was Bush and 70 is Obama.
That's 70 now.
Yeah. And the Obama standard is 70. And so in the last decade here, I'm just going to tell you, so we're out of compliance with ozone. In the last decade, we've seen nearly a 20% reduction. And you, you know this, this is true. If I'm misstating you, tell me, say it. We've seen nearly a 20% reduction in ozone, in our ozone non-attainment area, which is kind of this big section of urbanized Colorado, including northern Colorado, the Denver metro area. During that same time, we've seen population increase of approximately 20%. And we've seen a doubling in the number of oil wells. So even though population has grown dramatically, the number of people driving has increased dramatically, and the number of oil wells has increased dramatically. Ozone levels have actually fallen. They have, no, they have. I'm not lying. I'm not going to make the--
We're still looking though. We're still--
We're still out of, we're out of compliance. I'll be the first to admit it. That was the first thing I said. We are out of compliance, but we have made significant impacts to ozone levels in this, in this region. And last two weeks ago, at the MPO meeting, no less than the executive director of the State Regional Air Quality Council came and made a, and made a statement that in four years, he believes we actually will be in ozone attainment in all of, all of Colorado, in our, all of our non-attainment area, in only four years. So that's tremendous good news. I mean, certainly more will need to be done to do that. And so no one's saying we should stop doing any kind of mitigation efforts that we could do, but much has been done. And so my, my point is, is only this. A lot of very good people at the local level, public health departments and the state have really picked up and done yeoman's work on this effort to try to help mitigate these impacts of ozone. And so I, I just get, I, I want to make sure that folks know that we have done tremendous good work. And, and that work continues. No, what do you want to talk about?
It's on the same thing, but I just want--
Can we, we only have one minute left.
Does anybody have a question not related to oil and gas or anything else?
Yeah. Do we have anything else in Wellington?
Does anybody want to say something nice about Steve Johnson?
I wanted to share, so when we look at land use regulations, we do look at health effects fatalities. We do look at illness. But we also look at protecting people's property values. Because a use next to a property can, can affect that property's value. So there is safety, there is health issues, but we also look at the effect on neighboring properties as part, part of property values.
Compatibility, yeah.
Our code says that we're not to approve something that has a detrimental effect on a neighboring property value. So property rights work both directions, actually.
Absolutely. So there were, there were many things you could have done with your evening tonight. The fact that you chose to come down to the Leaper Center and spend several hours of it with us, I mean it, from the bottom of my heart, it truly does mean the world to us. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. It was great to see you. We'll stick around if you haven't, if you want to talk about anything that we talked about tonight for a few minutes. Great to see you. Everyone have a great evening and a nice, safe trip home. Thanks for coming out. Yeah.